The regular meeting of Lakewood City Council for June 20, 2023 is hereby called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. As is our custom, please join us in pausing for a moment of silence. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Baker.
Here.
Bullock.
Here.
Keppel.
Here.
Litton.
Here.
Marx. Rader.
Yep.
Schachner.
Here.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held June 20, 2023.
June 5th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Move to dispose without the necessity of a reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item one: Report from Health and Human Services Committee meeting held May 22, 2023.
Chairperson Keppel.
Dear colleagues, the Health and Human Services Committee met with Director Berry and Joiner and Associates on May 22 to discuss the Me We Education Support Group. Mr. Joiner explained that the Me We program helps family and friends of those struggling with substance misuse learn about the science of addiction and develop strategies to best support their loved one and themselves while setting healthy relationship boundaries. The Me We programs are accessible for Lakewood residents virtually or at Cove Community Center from 10:00 a.m. to noon on Saturdays. The program is open-ended, allowing residents to join at any time throughout the program at no cost. The program is being funded from the One Ohio opioid settlement. Recognizing how critical it is to build community and resiliency in Lakewood, the community supported the program. All council members can help to share the information about this free resource with our constituents. More information, upcoming sessions are listed on the City of Lakewood website, events calendar, under the Me We Education Support Group. Move to receive and file that report.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item two: Report from Housing Planning and Development Committee meeting held June 12, 2023.
Chairperson Bullock.
Thanks, Mr. President. Good evening, members of council and members of the public. On June 12, 2023, the Housing Planning and Development Committee met to consider substitute ordinance 10-2023, which would establish regulations for automobile-related businesses within the city of Lakewood. We had a fairly straightforward meeting and recommended, excuse me, we substituted a new amended version proposed by the law department and the administration. We discussed those changes and agreed to them, and then recommended the full council for adoption tonight, the new substitute version that is on our dockets tonight. It was a good deliberation. We had a fair amount of public input, and that public input resulted in fairly significant changes to the ordinance compared to when it was introduced to the format it's in tonight. I also want to note that we took some extra time on this ordinance. We had an additional committee hearing, and there's at least one extra council meeting as of tonight to allow for additional time between the various readings, between the three readings required by our standard legislative process. So I'm appreciative of the members of the committee for doing the thorough job, and the members of the administration for also being very thoughtful in how the legislation, the proposed legislation was crafted. And I look forward to continued discussion tonight. Move to receive and file that oral report.
Sorry, motions been made and seconded. Any discussion? Chairman Bullock, if there was a mind to move to adopt on something like this, would the committee be totally amenable to that?
Thanks, Mr. President. Yes. We have, we had multiple committee hearings and went through two different versions of the legislation. And so the form on tonight's docket is the latest substitute version, which is reflective of a couple rounds of thoughtful, good faith input from the public and discussion from council members. So the committee recommended the full council that we adopt tonight. Thanks.
Thank you for that clarification. Move to receive and file that report? Or is the motion already there? My apologies. The motion's already there. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes. Item three.
Item three: Substitute Ordinance 10-2023, an ordinance take effect January 1, 2024, to establish new chapter 781 Automobile Business Operations of the Lakewood Codified Ordinances, to establish regulations for automobile-related businesses within the city of Lakewood.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion for my colleagues, noting we have public comment as well? Councilman Schachner.
Thank you. I just have a couple clarifying questions for Director Vargo. Director Vargo, how many versions have we, has the administration presented of this ordinance?
Thank you, Councilman. The first version was a substantial revision. So there was that. And that was followed by the substitute versions submitted last week at the committee, and that was not substantive in changes. So there have been two modified versions sent up, one substantive, one not substantive.
And from, between the first version and the second version, that was the substantive change, what input did you folks receive in order to make those changes?
Thank you, Councilman. We solicited and received substantial input from affected industry members. And it was instrumental in the rewrite of the legislation. We learned from them the impact of the provisions. We were responsive, keeping in mind the administration's goal. And that's what led to the rewrite. So we have spoken to multiple members of the repair industry. Nobody from the leasing industry cared to get involved, but we've met with many, we've heard from many, we've talked on the phone with entities as well.
Do you recall what the biggest concerns were from those in the industry?
Yes, I think the biggest concern was we did not understand specifics of the business. For instance, why were we legislating distance between lines on their parking lot? That was a great point. We were looking at it as though it was a parking establishment where consumers go in and out of their cars. This is fundamentally different. This is a storage of cars. And so if the shop can get in and out once or twice, and it's not the most comfortable, that's fine. That serves their purpose. We listened. We said, "We have no idea of how to legislate that," so we took it out. There was costly issues with respect to an oil separator. We know we have other ordinances that address that. There was no need to impose that here. That would have imposed a significant cost. We heard that from operators. We responded. That is out. We originally did not want any used parts to be visible to the public. The city often gets complaints about parts strewn, and these are not small parts, and some of them are not even automobile parts. So we had a prohibition. Good faith comments from the industry was, "We have used tires out to be picked up periodically." It's safer to have them outside than inside. Made perfect sense to us. So, and they told us, "Listen, they're not just thrown out. We put them in an casing in a fenced area." And so we made that the legislation, that it is fine to have used parts outside. Sometimes engine parts are out there because they're to be picked up by recyclers, major steel products. The administration, and this is after discussion internally with the mayor and planning and public work, said, "Yes, our concern is not that they're not out there, just that it's orderly and out of, and be concealed from the public." We addressed it. We changed it. What we heard early on, "Why is this an offense punishable by jail?" That was taken out. That was not a major concern from most of the industry, but it was voiced, and it made great sense to us. So the penalty was reduced. And you'll see that the criminal items, the items that lead to criminal sanction, are very limited, very limited here. It is more of a regulatory ordinance dealing with the permitting process. So there is no question that this ordinance was responsive to the input. There's no question that it's very limited, non-intrusive, and it is supported by the overwhelming majority of the industry whom we've spoken with. Thank you.
In terms, I'm sorry, Mr. President, if you'll indulge me a little bit. In terms of the inspection that the city is to perform, and speaking of intrusiveness, how does the city contemplate performing that inspection? Information are they seeking, and what methods are they going to use in your mind to do that inspection?
Yes, thank you. The building department will perform a visual inspection. We spoke during the committee meeting last week that this is not a technical inspection. Technical know-how of the mechanics of the industry is not necessary. It will be a non-intrusive visual inspection. Are the inventory vehicles on the lot, or are they on the street? Is the, is there containment to the used parts out on the lot? Does a repair shop, to the extent we're talking about repair shops, does it have bays? Are those bays open? Are those bays sufficient for the, for the amount of work that is perceived? Very non-intrusive, very common sense-based, certainly within the bailiwick of our building department.
And Chief Dunphy might know this on your spot, if you can't answer, but is there any precedent within our ordinances in terms of doing inspections for particular businesses? Do we have other regulations, similar regulations in the city?
Yes, we do, Councilman. Certainly in the food trucks area, that's regulated. The cannabis dispensary, regulated. So this is certainly consistent with what the administration and the city has done with respect to other industries.
And one last one. Thank you. I've heard comments, often comparing, making the analogy between restaurants and patrons' parking to visit the restaurant. How would you distinguish, how is that distinguishable from customers parking in an area to visit a place versus storing?
Yes, and it's a fundamental issue, and that's probably where disagreement is with those who disagree with this. A patron parking for a restaurant or to go into a retailer is, is one thing. A patron parking to go in and get an estimate from a repair shop is fine, that parking on the street. To go in and inquire about anything on, with the repair shop is fine on the street. Where the regulation comes in is when the shop takes possession and control of the vehicle by having the keys. When that vehicle is under the control of the repair shop, that becomes inventory of the repair shop. It is no longer a patron's vehicle going to a restaurant. It is an inventoried asset to be repaired, or that was repaired, or that is under repaired. And the premise of the legislation is, by all means, private enterprise, keep your profits, but pay your costs. And it is not fair to the public, the people of Lakewood, that they upkeep the streets where a business usurps that street for its business and makes the city pay that cost, a cost of storing an inventoried vehicle.
Just one last point. I know I said that twice. Yeah, just a question. So in that, would it be more analogous to, say, a parklet, right? Where a restaurant is taking up some parking spaces and putting out their tables and chairs, but there's, that's regulated by the city, and you need a permit for that, so to speak? Or let's say if there was a bookstore, and they had extra inventory, and they couldn't fit it in their building, and they put it out on the parking, parking space and took that up? Is that kind of similar to what you were discussing?
That is a very apt analogy. It's one that we have used in discussing it internally. A restaurant cannot go out on the street and, and have their pickups there simply because they're feeding a meter. A food truck cannot take up the street. Any inventory of any business cannot go out on the street simply because they're feeding the meter. And this is a unique business where the inventory just happens to be motor vehicles. That's, that's just the nature of the business, but it's truly an inventoried asset.
I'm afraid to ask one more question. Sorry, President.
Final, final question.
Final question. Would there be any, I don't want to say remedy, but avenue for a business that, say, needs more space to store a controlled vehicle, either through a permit or from acquiring or leasing other spaces? Is there an avenue for that?
There sure is, Councilman. Any repair establishment can lease a lot through, I forget what the terminology is, but Director Landinger knows, and it is in the ordinance, that parking in that leased lot is, is certainly not a violation of this regulation. But, Director?
Good evening, Council President Lynn, members of City Council. The city does have a process for a leased lot, as the law director's describing. We handle that through a conditional use permit process that allows, in the case if the lot is just behind a commercial lot and it's residentially zoned, they can come, a property owner or an applicant can come and get a conditional use permit to utilize that lot for parking. Additionally, because this is automotive repair, generally automotive repair facilities in the city of Lakewood do require a conditional use permit, so they'd also have to have a conditional use permit to utilize it for the automotive repair purpose.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure? I'm just kidding. I hope I'm kidding. Okay. Any further questions, colleagues? Hearing none at the moment, we have, I think, at least nine members of the public signed up for public comment on this item, the first of which is Keith Davie. And Mr. Davie, name and address for the record, as with all who are up for public comment. Mr. Davie, let's make sure your mic is on. I just want to make sure.
Hello?
All right.
Okay, let's try it again. Keith Davie, 2131 Riverside Drive. So I'm here as a resident and a small business owner in Lakewood. So just for the record, I'm not here to support any particular business tonight. I'm not here to support any political agenda. I take a more libertarian view towards most things. And I just, I oppose this particular ordinance, and I have, and my councilman, Mr. Baker knows that. And from the beginning, I do appreciate the changes that were made. I think they were substantive, and I think they needed to come out, so I appreciate the changes and the elimination of a lot of the real tough stuff. But again, I, you know, I approach from a libertarian, I just don't believe that municipalities should be getting involved in permitting businesses. Now, having said that, you know, I understand that, you know, the city has an issue with one or two businesses on Madison. I get all that. And, and I agree for the surrounding people. But the research that I've done, it appears to me that we already, the city already has ordinances and codes and to remedy the situations that are in this ordinance. And I'm just not sure why that hasn't taken place before now. This is not a new issue. Again, I think that from a libertarian standpoint, this opens up, and we talked about precedent tonight, I think this opens up precedent for the city down the road to permit other businesses, whether they're transportation businesses, or coffee shops, or window shops, or t-shirt lettering. I think it opens up the precedent to permit other businesses, and I just, I'm opposed to that. Again, I think this can be a detriment to small business. I know we're small business friendly, and we're resident friendly, and we should be. But I think, looking down the road, you know, again, to broad swipe, broad brush an ordinance for all the, all the auto repair businesses in town, to me, is a grave mistake. And I think it will eventually lead to other auto repair businesses leaving. It will prohibit other auto repair businesses from coming into town. And I think it, even though most people don't pay attention to what council's doing, those businesses that are thinking about coming to Lakewood are going to look at that and say, "Well, wait a minute." You know, they're regulating this down the road. Will they, and again, this may be all real great that we want to take this one thing, but it's, can be used in the future. So again, I would just encourage my councilman, Ward 1, Mr. Baker, and the rest of them to take a step back, deal with the problem that we have. Use every remedy, remedy that you have to do that, but don't broad stroke every auto repair business in town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And before we go to the next one, I just want to, I made light of Councilman Schachner's questions, but I think what they really did illuminate was a substantial amount, and Mr. Davie pointed this out too, a substantial amount of give and take that occurred within this ordinance, and a lot of changes that occurred thanks to public discourse, and I do appreciate that. I didn't mean to make too much light of it. Next person up to speak is Charlie Colani.
Hello. My name is Charlie Colani. I have the shop on 13728 Madison, and I'm here to say that I completely oppose this ordinance altogether. I believe that the changes that were made were put in there that were outrageous things, and they just used them for negotiation purposes. The next thing I want to talk about is, I normally talk to the young lady in the council office to get information about the meetings and what have you, and we missed our last meeting. Because when we called the council office, there was a young lady that I've never talked to before because they said Maureen was on vacation. And she gave us the wrong time for the last meeting. She said it was at 6:30, when it was really at 6 o'clock. We got here at 6:20, and we missed the meeting. Next thing is, when I was here, the gentleman that was sitting next to Mr. Vargo, I don't see him here tonight, one of the council members asked him if they notified all the shop owners or all the businesses, automotive businesses, and he says they all know. I called, there's 24 businesses that I counted, and I called them all. And after three weeks, I've only been able to get in touch with maybe 60% of them, because a lot of them are corporations. It's not easy to get through to the people that you want to talk, talk about. Now, back to the parking issues. 24 automotive businesses. I went to all of them for three weeks, and I saw no parking problems in any of them, except three, one being the corner where we're at. And I'd like you to keep in mind where we are. We've mentioned this before. There's 186 businesses, apartments, and bars, restaurants, high school, gas stations, all within five blocks. And there's about 40 parking spots. So our area always has been congested. Nothing's going to change there. And it sure is not going to make a difference if you keep the automotive shops from using the street parking. As street parking is public parking, I can't understand how this even came up, and it's not going to accomplish anything, not in my view. I've seen many politicians create many ordinances, laws, waste a lot of time, waste a lot of money, and in the end, what happens? We have a few more parking spots that are going to get eaten up. If you've ever been at our corner between 4:00 and 8:00 o'clock at night, when the pizza places are going, when the bars are going, restaurants, coffee shops, it's congested. It's very congested. And we'll do whatever we can to help solve the problem, but this isn't going to solve anything. Why do we need to do inspections on 24 shops? Or 24 automotive businesses when there's only a parking problem in three of them? Why do we have to charge them for this? Why do we have to come in, and until tonight, this is the first time I heard anything close to what they're inspecting for? But I still have questions about that, and I'd like to get them answered, and I haven't been able to get them answered yet. The, there's nothing that's going to be accomplished by this. The areas that are packed is because of congestion, not because of parking. The people can't find a place to park because there's 100 people there looking for a parking spot when there's only 30 parking spots, and some of them are taken. Now, I've heard our businesses are different than most other businesses. You say that most people go to get a haircut, a restaurant, they're not there a long period of time. Maybe they're there for a few hours, three, four hours. But I know of a lot of places in Lakewood, there are office buildings, attorneys, doctors. The girls that work in there, they park their cars on the street, and they go out there all day long and feed the meters, feed the meters, feed the meters. If there's a problem with keeping cars overnight, I can understand, address that. If you want to limit the parking, but don't take it away altogether, that's not going to be good. And all you're doing is hurting small businesses. And the small businesses in the city are what support the city. It's what brings a lot of other businesses into these cities. And, you know, we, again, this is, it's always been a problem. It's always going to be a problem in certain areas, just because there isn't a lot of parking there, and there's a lot of businesses. In our areas, we have four or five automotive shops. We have six or seven bars, the restaurants, and you know what Angelo's Pizza's like. You can't even get near the place. And they have additional parking also. But again, share the problem, share the solution with everybody, not just with automotive repair garages. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. I, sorry, I'm new. There we go. I just want to point out for the record, really not necessarily in response just to that, but, but we, as this was being introduced, and when all things are introduced, we try to make it a point that we will generally have three readings for every ordinance introduced to council, and we have in this case, not to mention two committee meetings that discussed this. And all of those meetings were publicly noticed on websites, on social media, with the ability to request email updates on times and things of that sort. I think it's important to point that out. I certainly don't feel like, especially given the discourse and the changes that have been discussed, that this is something that was hurried through, through our processes. Next person signed up to speak is Scott Van Olson. And Mr. Van Olson, I assume it's about this ordinance as well?
It is.
It wasn't quite clear. Okay.
Yeah, this is about this ordinance. My name is Scott Van Olson. I'm also a business owner for 22 years, Madison-Hillyard intersection. What caught my concern when I got wind of this, and it's been kind of late for me, and it's because I don't check the website, to be honest, was that the cars we're discussing belong to the people of the city or neighboring suburb cities. They're their personal property. We have issues in my areas that has the parking. And our patients will park on the street. They'll park all over. We know that. Sometimes they're there a long time if they're with their neighboring dentist or the psychology officer that does our evaluations. And I'm concerned about that, as those cars belong to the citizens, and they certainly deserve adequate parking in a proximity as well. And all of us businesses struggle here, because this land was laid out before we had so many cars and so many people. And I know all our businesses need access. Sometimes we have a delivery, like we have a semi that backs up medical supplies. I can't let people use the back lot. I have my employees parking on the street. I park on the street. I have my employees parking on the street, I park on the street. And I felt compassion to the automotive folks, because I know they get parts too. The, this has been addressed already. Originally, I saw the penalties, I thought, ooh, that's a little drastic. I mean, this is definitely a Lakewood problem, we're all living with it respectfully. I just think that there's got to be a better way to work together. I get my car fixed here. I, I'm not a resident in the area, but I get my car fixed here, because I'm here eight to 10 hours a day. The inspections held concern me only because I own a business. I, I think inspections are always a concern as a business owner, we get nervous. We wonder what's going to happen? What does it mean? Is it my livelihood? Am I going to miss downtime? And I know businesses have slow and busy periods, and when we're real busy at our office, it's a mess inside. For those of you who have seen it, you know, there's charts out, there's paperwork, there's computers everywhere, and then when we slow down, we clean up, we look good. And I'm hoping that that's understood in these inspections, and, and applying this idea to our neighborhoods. And the other thing is, all of us suffer from a loss of parking in the winter, there just isn't anywhere to put all the snow, minus this year. And I think it's a concern for all of us, particularly as a business owner, when I heard that, I thought, what are we going to do when it snows? And we're pushing the snow in our corners. And I guess the last thing I'd like to ask is, do other cities in Ohio or in our area have such a provision? And if so, what is their approach to rectify the problem for the long haul? Like, how are we going to fix this so 10 years from now, we're not back? We're all back, you know? Or what, what, what can we do without putting in more ordinances or more rules? And like I said, I just feel pretty strongly, these cars belong to people who belong to Lakewood, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next person signed in to speak is Charles M. Colani.
Good evening. Proposed ordinance 102023 is wholly unconstitutional and should not be passed, and I have been making these points since May 1st. For starters, the enrichment of the city through a permit fee used to impose a yearly warrantless and coercive search labeled as an inspection in order for the citizen to operate an otherwise longstanding legal form of business using vague subjective guidelines, where failure to comply could result in criminal penalties as well as shutting down that business. And I have every reason to believe that is the sole purpose of this legislation, to target and shut down businesses owned by those that are out of favor with the current administration. If spineless shop owners who reasoned that no respectable shop would have a problem with this ordinance wish to stand here capitulating to the city and waive their civil rights, that is their business, but I am not one of them. This is facially unconstitutional, and no business in the city is subjected to a yearly inspection by the city. It is a massive Fourth Amendment violation at minimum, and I am appalled that legal minds far more educated than me would attempt to put this forward. On this, I cite recent cases of Pun v. City of Bedford and Difiori v. City of Lynnhurst. Next, we have the portion of the law that would restrict parking on our private property. This is a clear violation of the 14th Amendment and 5th Amendment applicable to state and local regulation by its incorporation into due process, into the due process clause of the 14th Amendment. It would deny us the citizen economically viable use of our property, which would amount to a disproportionate and impermissible benefit extraction of our interest in the property. The constitutional protection of private property rights in the U.S. Constitution is thought to promote economic prosperity and efficiency, as well as basic fairness and individual liberty. In this sense, private property rights are institutionally considered important human and civil rights that operate to protect a disfavored minority from favoritism and unfairness caused by a majority legislative action. By restricting how many cars we can keep on our property, like imposing rent control, this would effectively limit income and assume control of our business by you, the government, in clear violation of the previous men, previously mentioned civil rights. Third, the notion that a separate class of citizen can be created and denied access to public parking. This would not only be unenforceable, but like restricting gay marriage under the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment, illegal. The streets of Lakewood are held in the trust for the benefit of all of the public, not merely for the benefit of the residents of the city that are in favor with the city officials at the time the regulation is enacted. On this, I cite the Ohio case Roller v. Stoichklin, where it was clearly stated that neither the police chief in the case, but additionally, nor the legislative authority of the municipality has the power to designate public ways for the exclusive benefit of individual citizens, or to arbitrarily exercise discrimination against individual citizens or groups of citizens by prohibiting their use of such public ways. This ordinance clearly seeks to do exactly that. Furthermore, there are already laws on the books governing the overuse of public parking spaces that we abide by and are penalized for if we don't. So one can help, not help but wonder why the goalposts are being shifted when enforceable laws already exist except to target an individual business. Then we have the so-called appeals process, where an appeal to be, a denied permit is filed with the building commissioner, who then gives the appeal to the planning commission. The planning commission, a group of mystery Lakewood voters appointed by and beholden to the mayor and city council members that wrote this legislation, would then render final judgment of the appeal. So essentially, we have the parts of the government responsible for creating and enforcing the law, interpreting it as well. Clearly, this is not only a violation of separation of powers, but also is nowhere to be found in the duties of the planning commission outlined in the city charter. Lastly, I'd like to address some other concerning issues. Tonight is supposed to be the second read. That is what the law director told us, and like the start time of Ju, the June 12th committee meeting, apparently we relied to. I can only view this as a bad faith effort on the city's part in attempt to rush this legislation through when it appears to not have gone through the proper process. The ordinance was maliciously put on the June 5th agenda despite the fact that it was still in committee, and there was nothing to talk about. You may think you're checking the box of three readings, but this was evolving legislation that will dramatically impact the likelihood, the livelihood of owners of one kind of business in the city. How can you impact our business like this? This is a slippery slope, and governmental interference in business is a scary concept. It may be my industry now, but tomorrow could be hair salons or restaurants, and if there are other Lakewood business owners watching this, you could be next. If the administration didn't like the way we did things within the bounds of the existing law, you could have reached out to work with us, instead of moving the goalposts and creating an entire new chapter to the already bloated code of ordinance. Or, as I've said to others in the past, you're free to buy the place, put your name over the front door, do things how you see fit. Until then, Rosa Parks didn't sit in the back of the bus, and I'm not submitting to unconstitutional laws and government overreach.
Next person signed up to speak is Jennifer Soraki. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Lakewood City Council. My name is Jennifer Soraki, and I live at 12506 Edgewater Drive. I'm here to speak tonight against ordinance 10-2023. A business owner's expectation of privacy in commercial property is a fundamental aspect of private property rights. In the 1990s, Washington State Supreme Court Justice Richard B. Sanders wrote a Fifth Amendment treatise, which included the following definition of property rights. "Property in a thing consists not merely in its ownership and possession, but in the unrestricted right of use, enjoyment, and disposal. Anything which destroys any of the elements of property to that extent destroys the property itself. The substantial value of property lies in its use. If the right of use be denied, the value of the property is annihilated, and ownership is rendered a barren right." The biggest issue I see with this ordinance is requiring only automotive businesses to submit to yearly inspections and permit fees. It is not the city's business how one operates their own business, and it is unconstitutional to require a business owner to submit to an inspection without a warrant. What type of training would an inspector even have? Would they have any background knowledge of the automotive industry? If not, how would one conduct a fair inspection? It is biased and discriminatory to dictate how a business owner uses his own property for parking vehicles. The guidelines provided are subjective and undefined. Some lots are smaller than others, and some are shared, are shaped differently with multiple aprons, reducing the amount of parking spaces available on the lot. These restrictive regulations would disproportionately limit the income of some of these businesses. Vehicles parked on one's own property should be able to be parked any way the owner sees fit. In some cases, vehicles must be parked strategically in order to deter theft. As for the issue of public parking, it is extremely discriminatory to say that one type of business can use public parking spaces to support their business, but another one cannot. I've seen the street parking situation for certain bars and restaurants, and at certain times, it is highly congested. I see no difference in those types of businesses being allowed to use street parking for their business needs than any other type of business. Public parking should be on a first-come, first-served basis, period. So I ask you, please do not vote on this highly unethical ordinance. Thank you.
Next person signed in to speak is James Grosh. And we're always, beholden to my pronunciation and the work of a ballpoint pen, so.
That was fine. It's Grosh, but that's fine. Everybody makes that mistake. I'm here, I'm here tonight to speak out against this ordinance also, and just some of the testimony, or some of the public comment I've already heard, even made me more so. Did you try to work this out with the business owners, rather than trying to legislate something that's in such a congested area that there's really, I don't see any really way to legislate that? And it is public parking. And trying to pick winners in this scenario is just un-American. But we see that happening a lot these days in politics. And to the libertarian guy that came up, he made a great point. I mean, what's next? Who are you going to go after next? It's just not right that you're singling out auto repair shops in a very congested area, which there's no real reasonable solution to it, other than working with them, and they stated there's already laws on the books, so why are you trying to over legislate things? It just makes zero sense. These small shops, as another person pointed out, these small shops serve the residents of, of Lakewood. Are they not allowed to use a public parking spot? And the, the residents that go to these small businesses, they can't afford to go to the dealer. These guys, they build personal relationships with these people, and you're going to limit their ability to deal with people they have these relationships with that are being threatened by this legislation you're, you're proposing? It makes zero sense. From the comment that, that the mayor's just singling because you don't like them? Maybe if they had pride flags up on their businesses, maybe you wouldn't be going, going after them. I don't know. But I'm supporting these guys, because they're just trying to serve the public, and it just seems like a over, government overreach, that you're singling these people out for, for a public parking deal in a congested area. You're trying to say, form exactly how that's going to work, and it's just not fair. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Kerry Slaybaugh. Name and address for the record.
Good evening. Kerry Slaybaugh, 13723 Madison Avenue. My lawyer did not give me the notes for the meeting, so I'm going to wing it. I've been in Lakewood 30 years. I've had my business for 15 years, right in ground zero. And when I first came to Lakewood, I was all excited, and I went and bought a parking pass, and $250 a month, or six months, and I thought I'd park anywhere I want all the time for my business. Didn't work out. There's nowhere to park. I'm like, this is kind of weird, nowhere to park? Whatever. But I realized real quickly what was going on. First, I noticed firstly that there was no other place in Lakewood that didn't have the 15-minute meters, on the meters. I couldn't put you in 15 minutes. I'm like, why is that? That's kind of weird. And then, the first time it snowed, I saw all these people coming out, like rats off a ship, brushing the snow off the cars. All the cars that were all around me was being brushed off with snow off the cars. I'm like, well, these cars aren't from here. So it's been horrible. My customers can't come to my business. It's just horrible. There's nowhere to park. I challenge everybody to go to Conrad's or some place of business and walk through, and to go to ground zero and walk around, walk on the lot, walk into the bays, walk through, shake hands, meet the business, get inside. I guarantee you, you guys haven't done that, because I have. I've been inside the building. I know. Crazy. Bad, this whole thing's bananas, in my opinion. It's bananas. So, I mean, I just feel so bad for the people that really, really need parking, and the next door to me, they feel it more than I do. My business is mostly, I'm going to homes, so I don't, a lot of people come to my showroom. They want to see my windows, they want to look around. It's just, it's so sad. And this has been a 40-year problem. This is nothing new. This is nothing, this has been going on for 40 years. And these cars, and there's cars that have been there for years. I'm not talking weeks, but years. We got photos to prove it. I mean, so, I'm not going to waste your time, but please pass this ordinance. If we do anything, pass this thing. It would be fantastic for my business and my neighbors' businesses. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Dave Slife. Name and address for the record, please. Welcome.
Dave Slife, 13729 Madison. I think everybody here knows why I'm here. Across from my shop is Colani Automotive. It's been a problem since 1980, when the city first tried to work with Mr. Colani, did not take so many parking spaces on the street, because his lot was full of cars. Mr. Colani has been taken to court over the years. That's 1980 is when he moved in. One of our other businesses on the street, Weber Architecture, tried to resolve the problem back then. It didn't work. Mr. Colani's been to court, he's been to jail over the parking on his property. I have paper articles, I have Lakewood Municipal Port, Court. I would love all of his friends that are coming to Charlie.
Sir, sir, just please direct your comments to the chair.
I would like everyone to Google Charlie Colani parking problem Lakewood, Ohio. It's not a new problem. The man has two lots, they're full of junk cars. The cars don't move, so he parks on the street. If he could get the garbage off his street, tires, just plain old garbage, there would be room for him to park his cars, continue his business, and not just use one out of five bays to work on cars. I would love you to pass this ordinance. I know it doesn't help the other guys, but Charlie Colani thinks he's untouchable after the last 20, 30 years. There are Lakewood policemen here, I know, that are very familiar with Charlie Colani. I've never seen a business where the police are there two or three times a week in the past. Not so much now. And since this legislation started, all of a sudden, there's a few spots in our area that are open up. He plays cat and mouse. It'll be nice for now. When this is all said and done, he'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Jerry Knapp. You're second to last, as far as I can tell.
Okay. All righty. Jerry Knapp, Jr., 14588 Madison Avenue. I am one of the affected people in this ordinance. We've been in operation since 1985. As far as things are concerned from a professional standpoint, and I've talked about this, I think, at every single one of these meetings, this ordinance should not affect a well-run automotive shop. What it comes down to, a lot of the times, and we've talked about this several times, is being able to manage your inventory. If another automotive industry wants to call me spineless, that's fine. I know how to run my business, and I know how to run it very, very well. Then maybe they could take some lessons. What I'd recommend, though, is to all the people listening to this, and other people in this room, go on Google Maps, and you can kind of peruse around Lakewood, and you can see, and it'll tell you when that these pictures were taken, and then drive past several of these auto repair industries, and see if the vehicles have changed. And you will find that there are several auto repair shops where they have the same vehicles, probably 20 of the same vehicles, over the course of a year. I change out 20 vehicles in a single day. We go through about 200 to 300 cars a month. I know my shop's a little bit bigger, but there is a thing called inventory management. I had a customer park her car on the street today. You know what I did? I walked down the street, I brought the car in the lot, because that's what you're supposed to do as an owner. If a vehicle gets sideswiped on the street, that's your fault. And if you're just leaving cars out on the street, that's also an issue. We are not the public, we are private individuals who own private enterprises, who make a living off of the public here. Lakewood is- Lakewood is a privileged place to work, is a privileged place to own a business, and I don't know why you would tarnish your reputation and the city by not operating under these standards. And that's pretty much all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The final person signed in to speak on this matter is Khalid Neymar. And again, please correct any pronunciation errors.
You said it correctly, Khalid Neymar. So I'm very familiar with, I live in, I'm sorry, 114 North Ridge Oval. I'm a resident of Brooklyn, just here to support the Kalanis. I've gotten a chance to, to know the Kalanis over a little bit of time, and I think that, you know, as you can see, you feel his passion about his business and about his, his, his right to exist. And I've gotten to know a couple of people here on council, Councilman Bullock, Councilman Baker, fine gentlemen. So governing is hard, I understand that. A lot of passions here today. I just hope that there is a solution. Sometimes it's, it's not painless, a solution, when it comes to legislation, but I do think that what I'm hearing now is certain people want certain businesses punished, and I think that that's sort of a danger. And I'm not, I'm sure you're not making legislation based on that, so that's not the accusation. I think that it's difficult when you have a city like this where, as we mentioned in the last council meeting, it's densely populated, so there are some issues that need to be resolved. I just hope that not just the Kalanis, but all the other businesses in the area can, can come to this resolution and not feel like they're being punished or singled out. And I think that's just what I've picked up on, not from the body here, but certain other individuals. So my hope is that the Kalanis and other businesses can function well in this city because they are assets to your community. I work in and around the political space, so I know it's difficult to deal with passions of people who feel like they're being singled out or picked on. So at any rate, I hope that you will, as I'm sure you will, come to, to the decision that's best for the community and hopefully find some balance to appease the business owners. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment on this ordinance. Any comments from my colleagues? Earlier than, even Councilman Checkner, do you have? Oh, man. Okay. On the motion to adopt, then, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item four, report from Public Works and Sustainability Committee, meetings held June 12, 2023, and June 20, 2023.
Chairman Reeder.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met on June 12 to hear Resolution 202332. City Engineer Mark Papke discussed the resolution, which directs the administration to prepare, execute an application for congestion, migration, and air quality funds for the NOAACA, or the Northeast Ohio Area Coordinating Agency, for consideration of funding by the Ohio Association of Regional Councils on behalf of Lakewood. Basically, what this means is we're seeking funding from OARC for five traffic signals replacement in 2029, three of which are in Ward One in the southwest corner of Lakewood, and the other two are around Central Lakewood, one of them not too far from my house, at Mark's Plaza. These traffic signals are the more modern variety. I think they're called control arm lights, and they are replacing some of these old-fashioned hanging lights, excuse me, hanging traffic signals, not traffic lights. And they're much brighter, there's some additional safety features which we discussed. The proposal does require the city pays 20% of the estimated $1.348 million replacement cost of these lights, there was a, these traffic signals. There is a spirit of discussion about, you know, if this was an appropriate use of these funds in this application. The committee ultimately did unanimously refer this back to council with recommend, recommendation for adoption tonight. So that was the meeting on June 12. We then met again tonight, which is June 20, to hear a resolution, different resolution, this is 202331, which authorizes the mayor to enter into an operating agreement with Lakewood Community Ice, which we have members here from that group, to run Winterhurst Ice Rink on Lakewood Heights Boulevard. The biggest shift in this new agreement is that it is a fee-for-service model rather than the profit-driven model of the, the former agreement. That means that we'll be paying the provider here, Lakewood Community Ice, LCI, $160,000 per year in order to administrate the ice rink, and then we'll be receiving all the revenues as a city. It was the, one of the questions that both Councilman Baker and I had asked was, you know, was this going to be a revenue neutral, attempt to be revenue neutral? And, and both the planning department and law department seemed to agree that that was the intent and the goal, and they felt like that, that this number achieves or should achieve in, in the five-year contract, a revenue-neutral-per-year stance. I voiced my opinion that, you know, even if it weren't revenue-neutral, you know, we, this is something definitely worth supporting as a city. It's great to have that goal, but it's also good to invest, and the city also believed, the administration also believed that there was enough built into this agreement that there would be some capital improvement costs funded through this enterprise fund, which has been used historically to pay for the ice rink. So I felt that that was a pretty good solution, especially since the ice rink does need some improvements here over the next few years in order to maintain that asset to our community. I was very happy to hear that Lakewood Community Ice was, I think we all were, they're very deeply connected to Lakewood. I feel very confident that they will work with the administration to find a better balance and improve community access to the, our great ice rink. We know that there needs to be some improvements, and they acknowledge that, and appreciate their candor too, in, in presenting to us. Also satisfied that the agreement and the, that balance between revenues and expenses will be struck with, with the number we came down to. I will note that, you know, we received this agreement at 12:00 PM today. A member, Baker, Baker, had asked that we might have more time to review the document and see the financials, but to see that, we've received that document just a few moments ago here, and I'd asked if that'd be entered into the record as well with this report. And with that, I'll go ahead and, oh, and last line here, we, we refer this back to council for consideration tonight with no recommendation for or against, Mr. President. So we're hoping there'd be some more discussion here, and I would hope that Mr. Baker also has some comments on this report. I'm removed to receive and file.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. I appreciate that detailed and succinct report, Councilman Reeder, or Chairman Reeder, excuse me. Any further comment up to this point? Okay. Hearing none on the motion to receive and file, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes. And with that, this is an idea residing solely in my head up until right now, but I would move that we move items 11 and 12 from our agenda up, just so that we can continue this discussion on the same matter. Pardon? Ah, I'm sorry. Is that a separate Winterhurst transfer agreement? Is it?
The other one is the.
Ah, thank you. Okay. Disregard that motion. Madam Clerk?
Item five, substitute resolution 202331, a resolution to take effect immediately, authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an operating agreement with Lakewood Community Ice for 14740 Lakewood Heights Boulevard, known as Winterhurst Ice Rink.
I'll move to adopt. While, while sounding reluctant, motion's been made and seconded. Any, any discussion? I would hope so.
Yes, Mr.
Councilman Baker.
Interested in, in your thoughts, as I think you were the councilperson who was involved the most in, in the RFP process and selecting the operator that's before us. And I, you know, understand and, you know, in committee, but might as well do it here as well, you know, thank the administration. You know, this was, you know, once they terminated the old operating agreement and lease, it set on a pathway to the RFP, or to the RFQ, to the RFP, to interviewing all of the proposers, to then coming up with a new agreement within a short timeframe. And it was a lot of work. I've been on that side in my day job. You know, we did get this today at noon, and I understand that, you know, it's fast-moving, the July 30 deadline of the old operator moving out is coming quickly. Reviewing the agreement and having the discussion with the administration, I think I'm there with the agreement. I understand what they're going for. One of the hopes is that it removes this property from the tax rolls, which, which saves the city $60,000, which then can be put back in the facility. And then the administration did hand us just now, because I asked during the committee meeting, basically a budget, you know, for what they think the operator would expend here, including city expenses. And essentially, with $160,000 that the city is paying this operator, and with the operator's other expenses, it's about $1,000,001, $1,000,002. And the city, based on previous, you know, revenue estimates, expects that about $1,000,000 will come in in operating revenue for this facility. But that does not include notably any advertising or sponsorship revenue, which would include the naming of the arena. So Serpentine Arena, as of June 30, would go away, and then the operator in, in partnership with the city could find a new naming, right? And then other sponsorship opportunities within the arena, which I think would probably get us closer to a break-even proposition. In knowing how public assets are typically managed, you want to get near break-even, and then any, any extra would then go into kind of a sinking capital fund, but that would then go to, to, to address capital maintenance. What I would like on the floor tonight, since I think we're being asked to approve this, is have the administration explain this a little bit, this, this pro forma that we've gotten, to better understand it. Mr. President, if that's okay.
No. Councilman Baker, I really appreciate all, all those questions and, and sentiments. Speaking first from council's perspective, or my personal perspective, being, being somewhat involved in, in the discussions here, and then I'll, I would ask the administration to summarize from their end as well. The, the, the city chose to, to, to dance essentially with the four potential operators, three of which I have known on some level, just through being around the rink and, and being on the board at Winterhurst and things like that for, for a decade or so, in some capacity. The only one I don't know being an out-of-town, Michigan-based operator. I can say from my personal perspective that the choice made here was my preference all along in terms of who the operator would be. And then just some other comments I have, you know, whether it's our rec department or any other public good, you know, a, a public good costs something, so even if not revenue-neutral, a, a public good is going to cost us in some fashion if it's something that we choose to provide as a city, and we've got the building and, and those sorts of things, and so we are choosing to do so. I, I, at least looking at what we have in front of us financially speaking, if we were to be revenue-neutral, which would be great, we would be beating cities like Rocky River and North Homestead that have their own rinks and are not making money or being revenue-neutral in their, in their operations. And I think that's all I had, but, but again, the, the choice here is my preference, and I think the, the funding mechanism here is creative and, and rather unique, and, and I'm supporting it this evening. But I, I'd like the administration to offer their side of the, of the negotiations, and, and again, want a public discourse. I also note, if we were to try to do a special meeting or something like that, I cannot be here next Monday or anything like that. So just wanted to make that known as well. Mayor or your designee?
Sure. Director Lineiger will go through the budget.
And I assume rink guy means rink guy or gal, and, and, you know, to be generative.
Very technical. Good evening again, Council President, members of City Council. I'm just going to talk high level. Mr. Boss can fill in anything that I missed with regards to the budget. So as noted, we, we, as part of the committee meeting, there was a conversation about, about what the draft budget might look like. This is a document that we just received this afternoon, is very much a draft, is marked as a draft. We are still evaluating and going through it, but this, to be clear, this was LCI's proposal to the city about what, how they envision this facility operating from a financial standpoint. A lot of things could change, especially the first year going into this, because we don't know what we don't know yet, because we don't have access to the financial records, as we've discussed, from when the private enterprise was, was running the business here. But based on their experience, which they bring a lot of this experiences we've talked about to the table, this is how we see this budget laying out. So again, it is a draft. The only revenue that is programmed into this is the ice time that is contracted as we sit here today, and, and scheduled as we sit here today. It does not include any public skate, it does not include the adult hockey league, it does not include Learn to Skate. There's a whole bunch of other programming that's missing from this, from the revenue side of this. And also, as, as was known by Councilman Baker, the ad revenue is, is not part of this as well. So there's a significant amount of, we believe, revenue opportunity that's here to help close that gap and hopefully exceed and make this cash positive as, as we move forward with, with LCI. Also keep in mind that the programming that's in place is inefficient. It's not maximized in the way that, that we believe and that LCI believes can be maximized moving forward. We can do a better job of how we, how we program ice time into the facility, maximize that peak time, and take advantage of some of those downtimes that are, that are midday or, or other non-peak hours for the facility. So I just want to make sure you have that background, but we do believe that, is what we're seeing here is, is starting to meet the financial goals that we set out, and balancing that with our community goals that we have, we've, we've laid out is through this RFQ and RFP process. With that, I don't know if we want to go to the negotiation side, or if there's any questions from me or Dave, if I missed anything on the budget.
Assistant Director, you're good. Okay. Well, colleagues, any questions next? Vice President Kippel, and then Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, and thanks for the quick work getting this together. I, I just, I, we, the agreement that we received this afternoon does have a section 11 mentions advertising and sponsorships, which seems different from what's listed on here, and I'd like some clarification.
There were changes to it today because things are happening in real time, even significant terms, although we did come to an agreement in principle today on all the material terms. I don't know what version you have in, in front of you, Councilmember, but the, what, what the agreement is, is that we're going to entrust the solicitation of advertising and, and sponsorship opportunities to LCI. They're, they're well-trained. Kevin is well-trained in marketing and advertising, so we're going to rely on his good training to bring in all of the advertising and sponsorships. The city will not be retaining any other third party to solicit advertising. Once that advertising and sponsorship opportunity is brought to the city, the city maintains discretion as to going forward with any of those, because it has to fit in with, obviously, the goals of the city. Once the city approves the opportunity, the revenue in from that advertising to the city will be shared with LCI, 25% for LCI. But given the opportunity and, and what a great asset Winterhurst is, and the talent of LCI, we expect the 75% that the city retains to be a valuable contribution to the revenues.
Councilman Bullock.
Thanks, Mr. President. I've, I've got a series of questions that, I'll, I'll ask some of them now and maybe hold some for later. So on that point, to whomever in the administration, so if I heard you correctly, law to record, it's the anticipated advertising revenue cost split, or share of the income would be 75 to the city, 25 to the operator?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we know what order of magnitude that we think that advertising revenue might be? And I'm curious about this because historically, and I can remember, unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, 10 or more years ago, when the city first converted from fully city-operated enterprise to a business-operated enterprise, advertising revenue was a big discussion point, because the city is always looking for that to be the big kind of white whale savior of revenue. And the city concluded at the time that we weren't very good at getting rev, advertising sold and revenue in the door. And so the hope was that the operator, the, the. And so the hope was that the operator, the private sector operator, would be more successful at that. And I'm not clear, as we speak right now, how successful that has been consistently over time. I think it was, at least at one point, successful, but how much revenue we're counting on, I think, is an important question from the advertising. So do we have a clear plan and sense of, you know, what that number is?
We need to start with the existing arrangement since 2008. Since that time, whatever the advertising revenue was, it was retained by the operator 100%. The operator, under the agreement, had complete control over sponsorships and advertising, where the ads would go, how many they would be sold, and of course, the revenue went to the operator, nothing to the city. That's what we start with now. So we cannot project accurately.
Do we have any disclosures of those amounts from the previous?
No.
Okay.
No, we don't, and we were not privy to the financial information of the prior operator. That put us, you know, that set us back
Understood.
... in addressing relationships going forward with the new operators. We are going somewhat blind. These numbers that the, that LCI are projecting are just that. We believe they're conservative. We believe the revenues will cover the expenses. We certainly hope LCI has greater aspirations than just having the city break even. We view that as conservative, but we don't have the historical data councilperson to accurately assess it. And that's true on advertising revenue, but we think there's great upside for advertising.
Okay, thank you. So, and if the potential operator who's here tonight might care to address that at the appropriate time, I'd certainly be curious as to the, kind of, the private business expertise, if we can characterize at least the order of magnitude we're talking, are we talking about $2,000? Are we talking about $200,000? Are we talking about $2 million? Probably not 2 million, probably not 2,000, but kind of, how do we estimate that? And then the same question goes for public programming. So this is helpful budget, I appreciate it. Is the big enchilada, the ice rink fees for the, you know, the hockey and the figure skating, what's the gate estimate at for free skate, that kind of thing? So that if we think there's a $160,000 shortfall, to Councilman Baker's point, are we thinking that the public programming revenue would close that gap, exceed that gap, by a lot, a little, or are we, we're not sure?
We cannot be sure. I can, I can tell you, our wish is that it exceeds it by much, but we cannot be sure. I can tell you that the gap that you're looking at is $200,000 net to the city, and we don't have the ad revenue applied, or the programming.
But is the, is the public programming revenue also a black box from the previous contract? We don't have those estimates?
We do not have those estimates.
Okay.
So we have optimism that that's going to be very lucrative.
You know, and again, the same, the same question would apply from LCI as a potential operator, how, you know, what are their best projections, the order of magnitude? That would be helpful to know, too. Thanks.
Just, if I may, Councilman, and thanks for those comments and questions. Again, in the interest of potentially adopting this this evening, I think we ought to ask every question we've got. Having been around this world a little bit, I actually don't think it's probably that hard to project some of this stuff from a revenue standpoint. You're talking about hourly sheets of ice. You have a base charge you're going to have, and some things like that. I'd like to invite the potential operator up to speak at some point here, or representative or designee, but just want to make sure we've gotten all of our questions out there first to the administration, anyway, before we do so. Any further questions for the administration? With that, would a representative of LCI? There's so many LCI, CLIs and whatnot floating around in the area.
Lakewood Community Ice.
Thank you. Name?
My name's Kevin McCarthy. I am a member of LCI, Lakewood Community Ice. I don't know if you need an address.
You're good.
Yeah, regarding revenue for marketing and advertising, it is an unknown for us as well, but we hope to leverage relationships and alignment with larger organizations that align with the city in order to bring in a significant amount of revenue. I don't want to say a number, because I don't think, if we're off, you know, that doesn't serve us, and if we're way over, then, you know, that'd be great, but, you know, I think saying that, that of course, the approval from the city and in alignment with our organization and Winterhurst and everyone's best interests in mind, in aligning with larger organizations, like, you know, larger medical organizations, and things of that nature that lend itself to, you know, sports, sports medicine, things of that nature, will be something that will be of value to Lakewood and of value to those organizations, and bring in a significant amount of income, as well as other opportunities within the rink to advertise organizations within the community and greater Cleveland area.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. McCarthy while he's up?
Well, Mr. President, if I could, so without having the intent here, thank you for speaking to us, and thank you for your application, proposed partnership with the city. I think it's important, and I'm glad you've applied. The goal here is not to play gotcha at all, it's just to characterize for the public deliberation here as clearly as we can. So if the proposed gap, or if the gap in this pro forma that we're looking at tonight, which is what I see annually would be a little less than $200,000, do we think together, between the advertising or sponsorship revenue and the public programming revenue, that we could close that gap and maybe even exceed it?
Yeah, we believe, and I guess if you don't mind, I'll speak to the programming as well, we believe there are terrible inefficiencies currently, and that there will be ice even in just the programming with high schools and et cetera, who predominantly use the rink now, that there will be efficiencies there that bring in more revenue even at that. There is dead ice also that's available, that can be leveraged to bring in more revenue as well. And then on top of that, there's also the Learn to Skates and other community programming. That could be significant. I've talked at length with Russ and Mike, Mike McNeil, who's Gilmore Academy operator, who believed that, you know, in the heyday, Russ was telling me, you know, 300, 400, 500 kids on the ice on a Friday night at 6:00 PM, you know, $10 a person, you do the math, you know, the sheet of ice makes, you know, right now, 295, I think, an hour. If it's 250, if it's, you know, 300, 310, whatever it is, you know, that doesn't compare to the amount of money that an open skate on a Friday night can make. And that's all revenue that goes to the city, not revenue that goes to Lakewood Community Ice.
So is that a yes?
That's a yes.
Okay.
You got it.
Wonderful, okay. And I understand that there's some optimism there, and that's part of the structure of the contract, is you're applying some entrepreneurship. That's good to know. So in other words, the administration's view, and it sounds like the council president's view, too, from your experience, is that the proposed contract puts the city on the right track to be financially on firm footing, or on, not on thin ice, but at least on effective ice.
I just want to add to, my name's Tim McCarthy. Yes, we're related. The really important thing that we've set up with Sean and David and Chris and the team is that the real answer to your question, Councilman Bullock, will come in a plan that will be reviewed, agreed, everything by everybody, because those, the kind of things that Kevin's talked about, what he's done in his past, always operates on, okay, well, here's the targets, here's how much we should shoot for, for, here's what other people charge for advertise, you know, for sponsorship, what's the, and that's the big thing that I think caused LCI to be chosen. It's all open book, and you guys have been operating with a very dark tunnel for a long time. That's why we can't even guess, as Mr. Vargo said, can't guess anything, because everything was under the, under the bushel basket, so. So what he said spot-on, we're going to have a target to make it revenue-neutral. He's the programming expert, but more importantly, we'll work together to figure out how to maximize, because it's only in our best interest that the city gets, hopefully, well beyond the revenue. But again, as Sean and David told us the first day in, number one issue, serve the citizens. And that's not always, that's not always a revenue maker.
But it's in the name, and that's, you know, where we come from and what our, you know, focus is, is to serve the community first, and the tenant, the core tenant groups that need to be served as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a few other comments, but colleagues, any other? Just a few points. One is, even if open skate didn't make more money than an hour's worth of ice rental would, that's part of the public good part to me, that that be consistent, and every single week. I grew up with Friday night skates at Winterhurst Ice Arena, and I want the youth of Lakewood to know that they could do that same thing, and, you know, skate mediocrely as I did at that, at that age. Fair. Basketball was your sport, that's right, Councilman Baker. To, you know, do we have a means, does the city have a means to assess the advertising occurring so that we're not missing something? And I'm not judging the operator that they would withhold any of that sort of a thing, but by the same token, you'd hate for them to say to, you know, one of the renters of ICE, hey, we'll give you some free advertising if you just do this, or whatever the case may be. There's like some potential for challenges there in terms of knowing what we're getting and how and why. And I guess I'd want to understand from the city's perspective, how we're ensuring that we're getting every dollar due to us for that purpose.
Yes. The, under the agreement, Council President, LCI is required to bring all the sponsorship and advertising opportunities to the city before placement of the advertisement, before entering into the agreement with the advertiser. We have the right to refuse it, to modify it, and LCI would then be our representative in closing the deal with the advertiser. So as you heard from Mr. McCarthy, they are insisting that they be transparent, and that's in our interest. So that transparency on advertising is built into the agreement.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And knowing that, that leads me to another question, that actually Vice President Kepel pointed out to me as she was reviewing the document, with regard to approval of hires by the operator, which seemed like an interesting clause to have in an agreement like this. I understand that it wouldn't be reasonably withheld or anything like that. I'm wondering what the thinking was behind putting a provision like that in here, if it was something to do with prior operators or what.
No, Council President, it is a function of the structure of the agreement. The structure of this agreement is roughly cost-plus, so we are going to reimburse LCI for their costs, including reasonable payroll. So as a result, because it's our money, because it's the city's money, on a monthly basis, we will be reviewing the projected payroll budget and having input as to the size of the payroll devoted to Winterhurst.
Sure, and anyone running a, you know, a small business, especially in an area like this, has to hire quickly sometimes, and so I guess that's where my concern is with a clause like that, is, you know, suddenly you need someone yesterday to fill a slot tomorrow at 8:00 AM, you know, you need to hire a kid or whatever, or rink guy or gal to do something. And I guess I want to understand how that process can happen swiftly.
Yes. We are, we are determined to give deference to LCI. Now, just keep, we never lose sight of the fact, since 2008, the city has had no operational input or control into Winterhurst. So we have had nothing. So we are in no position to dictate payroll hires to LCI. We don't want to. They are going to, in good faith, propose to us, and it will take something unique for us to stand up and say no, because we want this to be a partnership. We are deferring on their day-to-day operational judgment. We don't have the history to be control freaks, even if we wanted to be.
Understood. And I also want to state that, you know, I appreciate everybody's questions, and my concern in this process all along has been having an operator that, that has the level of organization and communication that I think our city deserves and its programs deserve and need. And that's what I felt about this choice. All these other nuts and bolts are very, very important, and we need to make sure they're tightened and figured out, but for me, it's that interpersonal and marketing and organizational side that's important to me, and I feel like we've got a good and decent operator in place, but they're just at base camp with a huge mountain to climb. And so we're putting a lot of trust in LCI as well, in terms of selecting them here, and they have their work cut out for them, as does the city, in terms of implementing what we have before us. And eight years ago, I left hockey politics for real politics, and real politics is like way easier. I just want to make sure that's known as well. Councilman Reiter.
Just one quick comment. You know, like all of us, we've had just a little bit of time to review this, and one thing I've really come around to, and I wanted to highlight before we break on this, is the fact that it's a five-year contract. My last question to the committee, how long is the contract, and the renewal period's one year? I think that's, actually, I'm coming, I think that's great. I think that just shows that we're committed as a city to this ice rink as a community asset, and then we're willing to work through those years to build it up to its form of greatness. So I think that's a good setup. I think it's a good amount of time, and it just demonstrates our commitment. So I wanted to add that to the record. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Any other comments? Councilman Baker?
Yeah, one last one, and thank you. You know, as I've dug into all this information, I understand that there's a certain amount of, you know, information that is unknowable because of the way the previous arrangement was set up. I would ask the administration to, in six months or a year, have a communication before council, bring the operator before us, talk about how it's gone, because I know that, you know, I've received many, you know, constituent requests for information and other things about this, and because of the way the previous deal was set up, it was hard to kind of have that control. But I assume that we are going to continue to get, as things change at the arena, more questions. So I would ask for a commitment from the administration to come back in six months or a year to have a public meeting with council to talk about these issues, and if the administration is willing to do that, I'm willing to vote for it tonight.
Administration, are you willing to do that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I might urge a year solely because you'd get a winter season under your belt, or at least wait till spring of next year, and get a winter season under your belt, but I think that's a fair request, certainly. And only doing five years, I think the previous agreements were eight or 10. They were lengthy. It gives us more room to renegotiate if necessary, or whatever the case may be. Vice President Kepel.
Thank you. At the risk of taking us backwards, just as we were talking about this, I had a few other questions. One of the things I noted in terms of, as we were talking about staffing, you know, it is kind of a unique setup, however, literally for my businesses, I'm often the contractor performing the programming on behalf of another entity, so. And in those, we're often asked to verify the backgrounds and credentials of any of the staff working for us. I don't see any sort of clause of that nature in here, and I just would like to hear either thoughts of administration about that, or if LCI is interested in speaking a little bit about, you know, hiring credentials and how, you know, you know, are you committed to background checks? What kind of things do you look for? Just because if we're looking at this as revenue-neutral, as a public good, too, and is representing the city, I just want to make sure that we're thinking about those things.
I, you know, I'd actually love, this is I, you know, I'd, I'd actually love, this is a good segue, I'd love to hear from Russ Sinkewicz, just because he's one of the operators, and the name most associated with this group to, to me, and would love to hear from you in general, but also to Vice President Keppl's question.
Russ Sinkewicz with LCI here. And to answer your question more directly, Mike McNeil, who's not here tonight, he'll kind of be more of the, I guess, the operational leadership as far as, you know, dealing with all the, the hiring and whatnot, and there's a number of employees that we plan on retaining, wonderful people that are, you know, have a certain high-level expertise in ice refrigeration and all of that. And certainly that's something that, you know, we could address moving forward here in our company, maybe talk a little bit more on after the fact here with kind of the plan with that. But, you know, just more so as a whole in this opportunity, you know, it, it truly is a privilege for us. I, I literally live eight streets, or eight houses down the street here, but growing up in this rink and putting in countless and countless hours, you know, I've, I've seen where the building was in its heyday as a kid. I mean, it, it truly shaped my childhood and, and really kind of put me on a path to be in the sport and, and take it beyond the sport, and then unfortunately, I've seen what it's been the last decade, and it doesn't, it doesn't face the public well, it doesn't serve the public well, and that's something that, the whole model of our, of our proposal and, and who we are and what we stand for is transparency and consistency and, and community good, and that's kind of, I think, how as a group collaboratively we, we arrived at this, is, you know, this isn't a for-profit thing, this is a, it's a sepi, it's, it's deliver what's best for the public, and a number of the things that are to be determined is we are looking at a black box because we don't know. We don't know how it's ran, it's been ran, as, as Tim said, in a dark tunnel, and that's something that we're so excited to have phases and to bring back all of these things that unfortunately, a kid 10 and under has never experienced with open skates that John so poorly skated in, and I skated around him in as a kid where there's hundreds, you know, hundreds and hundreds of kids participating, and, and what the building doesn't offer right now that we're going to bring back as, as quickly as possible is just the base experience and truly the right in these sports in open skate and learn to play and parent in tot hockey, and opportunities for kids to get on the ice for as, as cost-effectively as possible. And that can't be done in a for-profit model, because like John had mentioned, you know, it's okay if you only have a couple seniors skating in an open skate, because that's a wonderful hour invested to your residents that doesn't exist right now. So that's something that, you know, again, as, as truly an ambassador, a lifelong ambassador of your building, of the sport, of the city, we're just absolutely privileged to bring in and, and to kind of shepherd into the new era, so.
Thank you. Any, any other questions for Mr. Sinkewicz? Please follow up, Vice President Keppl, and then Councilman Bullock.
Thanks, um, thank you for that, and, and I would tend to agree, and actually, my other question is in terms of talking about that for the nonprofit model. You know, I think we look at that with our public pools, our public parks, that these are amenities for our residents, and we certainly want to continue those, although I wish you, you know, making revenue would also be great, too. But I, following up on the question in terms of staffing, so particularly public-facing staffing, do you have plans in place to make sure that, you know, those folks working with our youth and with the public, like what kind of, what kind of controls do you have on that, or do you plan to have?
Of course. Do you want to speak on the, the point?
Kevin McCarthy, I was just going to bring up that our operations, you know, expert and the person who's going to be guiding sort of all of this, you know, has a lot of, a lot of experience in that he operates, I'm sorry, in that he operates Gilmore, and plenty of processes and, you know, standard operating procedures in place there for him to draw from and for us to put into place to assure the safety of, you know, everyone and the ability for us to truly be able to recommend somebody be, be hired or not based on qualifications and, you know, background checks and et cetera, et cetera, and, and, and what is comfortable for our partner in the city, you know, those, those sorts of understandings will be, come to together, because truly it is, you know, transparent and partnership and collaboration. So, you know, what's comfortable for, you know, those in the administration around the table will be, you know, we will be in conversation about all of those things consistently.
Councilman Bullock?
Thanks, Mr. President. Just wanted to continue some of the threads of discussion here that I think we're making very satisfactory progress on, just so I can better understand. So, a couple of random questions. Number one, do we anticipate employee benefits are incorporated? I see that there's allowance for that, but the operator, I don't know if you anticipate providing healthcare, that kind of thing to your employees or not. I think it's good if we do that or can budget for that, but I understand that's an expense.
Yeah, I think the, the main thing that'll affect that is how the city feels and how the city wants us to do, that kind of a thing. The thing that we know that is kind of fun, because of Russ's association with the arena, is there's some pretty good people there now, and that maybe haven't had quite the opportunity they might be able to have. And yeah, benefits is, I mean, people really care about that, but then you mix that with salary, you mix that with, I mean, most people don't know this, but I found that out in my businesses. The number one peop, thing that people are looking for, anybody want to guess, when they go to work for somebody? I was always sure it was money and benefits. Stignity. Stignity. It's, it's, it's the chance to be a part of something, it's the chance to, you know, and it's kind of like Russ was telling us from the start when we got roped into this in the first place, the cat that, and I don't even remember what his real name is, a guy named Zbear. Russ has always respected a great deal and always felt like he hasn't been able to blossom entirely. I shouldn't use actual people, but I guess I just did. That's the kind of human policy we will, that's, that's the only thing that works.
Okay, that's a great answer.
Treat people with dignity and pay them as much as we can.
So that's going to be a, a kind of a management decision that you're going to evaluate and package?
Shared, yeah, it's really good, yes, that's, thanks for doing it more briefly than I did. But yeah, it'll be shared with these cats, so they'll help us figure out what's the right.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then, so I can make sure I understand, how do we detail, and how do we determine clause four, the use of the ice arena? Maybe that's detailed in clause five, but...
Nope, there's no detail yet. And it's going to take forever. Here's the thing we told the committee that I want not to be misunderstood, you're on to the issue that's going to be the hardest issue, and it's not going to be fixed quickly. It's going to take us time, it's going to take working with you guys in time, because ice is the thing that's, it's like, the supply is down here and the demand's up here in northeast Ohio. It's just amazing, a new rink hasn't been built in 20 years. 20? 24 years. So ice is a premium value, and now we have the community benefit that President Letton talked about. It's going to be tricky, baby. It, it really is. It's going to, we're going to have to figure out, and I guess the most important thing I was trying to say is, got to do it in steps.
So there'll be an iterative process with the city and so...
Can't say it better.
So the transparency you're referring to is going to be kind of an ongoing conversation? I do see that the proposed contract says, LCI shall prepare maintenance and operation schedules, so presumably operation schedules means we're having this much open skate, this much other, you know, learn to skate, that kind of thing, and that'll be a conversation between you and the city. You'll try something out for a few months and calibrate accordingly with feedback from the public. That's the spirit anyway, right? And does that align with what you envision?
Yeah, again, really well said, Councilman. But the other thing that you referred to that's going to be important is meeting rhythm. The only thing that's ever worked for me in business when I'm trying to partner, because it was, it was like Councilman Keppl, I, I did a lot of work for, where I was contracting for a client, is meeting rhythm. So, like right now, it's, things are so scary, we're, we have a daily meeting at 10 with, with your city. Then we'll go to weekly, when we start getting confident, then we'll go to monthly. I, I think it'll always be bi-weekly for sure with, with the planning group, but there's your assurance right there, that's all. Yeah, you try something for a couple of months, and then in the monthly meeting, it's like, oh my gosh, nobody showed up for that third time in a row, should we, you know, and then you got the next group that should come in there, and then we talk about it and figure out how to, but, but it's incremental. It will not happen overnight.
Okay, that's wonderful. And then, in support of what Councilman Baker was driving at, and this is kind of common to the administration, I think that, given the fact that we're trying to improve upon the existing contract, and I'll note that LCI is not the existing operator, so you're caught in the horns of this dilemma, how do we improve upon performance? So I think we want to be in a trust but verify situation.
Oh.
Which means that in addition to your periodic meetings at the appropriate rhythm or tempo, city council and, and by extension, the public ought to be involved in, in evaluating, you know, the question of how do we, how are we evaluating performance? How do we know we're being successful, right? Whatever those metrics are. So we certainly ought to be talking periodically in public fora, forums like this, in the six-month or year basis, but looking back on the previous contract, I think the initial idea 12 or more years ago now was a good one. It may have operated well for a time, but in retrospect, there wasn't enough trust but verify conversations between the city, that I was aware of anyway, and the previous operators. So in order for us not to go for a long period of years, I, I do welcome at least annual conversations, as, as Councilman Baker was alluding to. I, I get that, that is likely the intent of the administration here, but just want to say for the record, I think we ought to have that as a practice. That's not detailed in the proposed contract tonight, though. So basing that, like Councilman Baker was saying, on the assurances of the mayor and the mayor's team, I'd be, you know, happy to support the, the motion tonight, but, but I did want to get out there for the record that it sounds like what we're doing is positioning ourselves to do a much better job of being responsive to the, the operating public, and that includes the customers, the paying customers. And if we can be more successful in expanding and, and incrementing up the users at the facility, then we're put, positioning ourselves to be able to justify capital investments, which are badly needed, because right now, we're going to have to put a historical marker on the, the lockers in the lobby area, which are vintage, what, 74, 75 or something? Pretty dynamite, but that's not what we're going for, I think, here, right?
Yeah, and to address, they have to, I'm sure Mr. Vargo or the mayor will address the meeting thing, we'll, we'll go with whatever rhythm, but I think it's important to mention of what you just mentioned, which relates to what Councilman Baker has brought up both in the committee and here. Everything is set on what you aim for. And so even within, we're saying no later than the start of the regular season, let's say, for example, we were 210,000 short on the pro forma, or we're 102,000 short, that becomes the goal for the marketing department to, to then, and then their job is to build a plan that'll have us getting sponsors, you know, that'll at least make up the difference by, you know, X date, as, as will be directed by the lieutenant colonel over there.
Any talk of, of raising canes being served in the...
We, we, we no longer operate them. We still build them for, for the brand, but we sold the operations back to the, to the franchise.
Understood. It still might be a draw, just, just saying.
All right, I'll talk to them.
Yeah, for sure. Any further comment, colleagues? I really appreciate the discourse here tonight. I, I, I think we've, we've gotten most of our questions answered. I know where the rubber will meet the road from council's perspective is with the public and their usage of the rink and what response we get back from our constituents. That's going to be huge for us, that's going to be important for us, what rates they're getting charged to use the rink, you know, on a Friday night skate or wherever, to skate mediocrely or perhaps better. That'll be where the rubber meets the road, and, and I, I look forward to further conversations about that, because that's where, that's where it's most important to, I think, most of us, all of us.
Okay. Any further? Anything further? Okay. On the motion to adopt, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item six, resolution 202332, a resolution to take effect immediately authorizing the city engineer of the city of Lakewood to prepare and execute an application for congestion mitigation and air quality funds for the stated described project and to submit the same to Northeast Area Wide Coordinating Agency for consideration of funding by Ohio Association of Regional Councils on behalf of Lakewood.
And I believe this was approved out of committee, so with that, I'll move to adopt.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item seven, report from Public Safety Committee meeting held June 20, 2023.
Councilman Baker.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we had our Public Safety Committee meeting whereby Chief Kowchak, in his last council meeting, didn't realize when we scheduled it at the time, but, so later in the, in the agenda, we'll have more on that. But, so we went over the 2022 Police Annual Report. Some positive in the report, the department is now fully staffed, so a lot of the staffing kind of challenges that were present in 2021 and 2022 have at least now been kind of brought up to snuff. Violent crime is down, there's enough overdose, both overdoses reported and overdose deaths are, are down, which is a good thing. There is enhanced speed citations, which, you know, is something that, speed enforcement is one part of kind of keeping our community safe, and I applaud the police department for, for doing that. And then also car thefts were up in 2022, but that seemed to be related to the sustainability of kias to being stolen and some of the popular culture around stealing them more for joy than for property acquisition. So those numbers have, have gone down a little bit into 2023, which is good. So with that, that is the report of the Public Safety Committee.
Will receive and file?
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Noting the, the success of our, our safety forces in keeping Lakewood safer and safer. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item eight, ordinance 142023, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing the transfer in advance of certain funds.
Move to adopt.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item nine, ordinance 152023, an ordinance to take effect immediately to approve the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances and to provide for publication, the publication of such new matter.
Move to defer.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 10, resolution 202333, a resolution to recognize and thank Chief Kevin Kowchak for the extraordinary length and quality of his service and leadership to the Lakewood Police Department.
Move to adopt.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Bullock?
Chief, thank you for your service and for your patient and professional and determined service throughout your time as chief and really before that as well. It's been a pleasure to work for, with you, and, you know, it's, I, I think people take for granted sometimes, and we shouldn't, the fact that public safety can be a high-stress position, that you always have to take the perspective of a common sense citizen and then be impartial and fair and consistent, and that's a lot. And then on top of that, you have public service... And then on top of that, you have public service requests all the time from seven council members, including me. And so want to make sure to say thank you. And I know that in retiring, you're going to miss Monday nights twice a month, but I, I trust you'll also find other things to do with that time. So thank you very much for your service.
Councilman Schechner.
Thank you. I, I think the greatest gift we can give is to be brief for Chief Kowchak. I, I would just simply say that Chief Kowchak took his position in one of the most difficult times that the city has seen, the start of COVID, protests, shootings that occurred, and car thefts, and to keep the community calm and to know that we had professionals out there that were taking care of business and were doing the best we can every day. And I think Lakewood has a lot of faith in its police department, partly because of your service to it, and thank you.
Vice President Keppel.
Thank you. I'll also keep it brief, so you can hopefully get home sooner rather than later. But I just want to thank you, Chief Kowchak, the time Councilman Rader and I got to come over and tour the police station with you, and I learned a lot from you. And also, your taking the initiative to modernize several things around the police department was very much noticed and appreciated, from the auxiliary forces to, you know, the increased diversity in hirings, to advocacy for your department in terms of budget issues, too. I appreciate that. So your service is very much appreciated, and we, we thank you for all you've done for Lakewood.
Councilman Baker?
Didn't mean to hit my paper. I spoke a little about Chief in the Public Safety Committee meeting, but 1989, so I was six years old when he started as an officer. So he's been protecting me as a resident of Lakewood since then. But no, so if you look back at the history of Lakewood since 1989, the city has gone through many ups, many downs, and within this police department, I always get a lot of compliments from residents, and attitude reflects leadership. And so Chief Kowchak's leadership of the department has been a steady hand, and I've always appreciated the professionalism with which I've interacted with him, and I wish him the best in retirement, and I guess he'll have to pick up some new hobbies or something. So, thank you.
Councilman Rader.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership and dedication to public service, and you really set a standard here that I, I know that, you know, you've got some big shoes to fill, but we've got some great leaders that you brought up under you, too. So you're leaving the department in very good hands, and that's, that's the best sign of a, of a great leader. So thank you for your dedication and leadership.
Councilman Marks.
Well, I know I spoke before, so when you get that fishing rod, let me know, and I'll buy you some worms. Enjoy your retirement. We'll miss you. And I have to say, because of our safety forces, I've always felt safe in Lakewood, and I want to thank you for your service to make that happen.
Thank you. And Chief, you have one of those couldn't pay me enough jobs, I think, and I think a lot of people feel that way about, about the role of police chief in, in many cities, Lakewood included. Your service was lengthy and your time as chief somewhat brief, and I, what I appreciated is that you knew that and you used that to your advantage to do the job as well as possible to make changes where needed and necessary, even if they were hard. You were the absolute right person at the right time for this role for the city of Lakewood, and we owe you a debt of gratitude for your service, both the lengthy part and the brief part, because you, you maximized it to its fullest potential. We, we thank you for your service. Any further discussion? Anything to say, Chief?
Just quickly, I did enjoy my tenure here as chief. I enjoyed working with the council, the administration, and all the directors here at the city. I think it's a great group of people. They have the city going in the right direction, and it's only going to get better from here on out. So good luck to everyone here, and I'll keep you all on my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you. And as we momentarily complete our motion to adopt, we want to take a quick picture with you and this resolution that we've all signed, if you don't mind, even though it'll lengthen the meeting slightly. On that motion to adopt, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
I'll send it to the I D.
All right, item 11.
Item 11, communication from Law Director Vargo regarding Winterhurst transfer agreement.
With my apologies for my confusion earlier, Law Director Vargo.
Thank you, President Linton, members of council. Before you, is a resolution regarding the termination of the current lease agreement for Winterhurst and the transfer of certain assets. The city has issued notice to the current LSE of our, of the city's intention to terminate the lease on June 30th. Since that time, the city and the LSE have undertaken negotiations to settle the amounts due under the lease and for the transfer of equipment to the city. We have now reached an agreement in principle that would settle the issue of rent and provide for the transfer of, of equipment. This agreement in principle is set forth in the form of agreement attached to this resolution. The parties may agree to modify certain terms. We're still waiting on comments from the current LSE Iceland, but the substance of the agreement, including the material financial provisions, should remain. The city expects that both parties will execute the final agreement before June 30. The closing of the agreement by June 30 will allow for the new operator to incorporate the equipment into operations. This should provide for an efficient transition. A list of the equipment to be transferred is attached to the form agreement. In addition, council members, with the equipment comes certain leases that the city will assume, including a lease for one of the two Zambonis. Given the transfer of operations to the new operator on July 1, 2023, the administration respectfully requests adoption of the resolution on its first reading. Thank you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Move to receive and file that communication?
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 12, Resolution 202334, a resolution to take effect immediately authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Iceland USA Lakewood LLC and all related agreements for the closing of the lease of 14740 Lakewood Heights Boulevard, known as Winterhurst Ice Rink.
Move to adopt.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Bullock?
Can we get an explanation of the amounts? You know, what's the basis for the, I've seen acquisition price, one-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand. Rent set off against acquisition price, sixty-six thousand, seven or fifty. I mean, could we get a walkthrough of the basis for those numbers?
Yes, Councilman, thank you. The, the structure of these discussions were to resolve all issues outstanding on the lease. The discussions were contentious. This operator provided an RFP, and when the operator wasn't chosen, there was nothing in it for the operator anymore. So it became a zero-sum game in discussions. The amounts in here are to resolve several issues, including the, the calculation of the rent for the current year, 2023, including the transfer of all the equipment, either outright purchase or an assumption of a lease. Also not included in this agreement is resolution of a dispute over the rent for 2020. That, that was paid in full within the last two weeks, and that also was, gave perspective to the city's approach to negotiations. In terms of the specific equipment items, you'll see that many of the items are irrelevant to the new operator. A handful are critical. The calculation of the amounts to offer, again, you have to consider the, the disputes that were being settled as part of that with respect to rent. But in terms of giving the city some understanding of the value, the planning department, Mr. Boss specifically, did research of specific items to understand some type of resale value given the age of the key equipment pieces. The city also considered what the replacement cost would be if we had to go out and purchase it new. And also, very important to the city was a smooth transition, as smooth as possible to the new operator, and that really required these key pieces of equipment to come to the city. So there was some pressure on the city to close this deal. There was equal pressure on the seller to close the deal in, in as much as the new seller, we understand, will no longer be in this business.
So just thank you, Director. As a follow-on, so the, the former operator or the about-to-be former operator is maintaining that they purchased and own all of the equipment listed as opposed to they inherited it from previous, previous time period when the city would have bought and transferred it to them. They're saying they bought all this new in the time of their operation, therefore, part of the logic of the price here is that the new operator, the city and the new operator would be taking over ownership.
That is correct.
Plus, it sounds like it got a little litigious, and so some of our goal here is to settle all legal disputes in a clean and timely manner.
That is correct. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes.
Item 13, communication from Public Works Director Gordon regarding 2023 Ohio EPA Recycle Ohio Grant Award.
Director Gordon.
Thank you. Dear President Linton and members of council, the city's Division of Refuge and Recycling was awarded $26,897 from the 2023 Ohio EPA Recycle Ohio Grant Program. The division will use this grant to purchase a new shredder and new baler for the new recycling center. In order to fill the grant obligations, the city will need to match funds in the amount of $8,995. As part of the grant submission, the city will have signs made and present at the new baler and new shredder indicating the equipment was purchased in conjunction with the 2023 Ohio EPA Recycle Ohio Grant Program. Also, once the new equipment is received, the city will need to perform public education outreach as detailed in our grant submission. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that communication?
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
Item 14, Resolution 202335, a resolution to take effect immediately authorizing the mayor or her designee to enter into an agreement to accept a 2023 Ohio EPA Recycle Ohio Grant Award in the amount of $26,897 and requiring a match of city funds in the amount of $8,995.
Move to adopt.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. And with that, we are at the conclusion of our docket for this evening. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment in addition to those we've already had? One moment, sir, as I just grab the sheet so I can announce names. And while we're in the process of doing that, a huge shout out to our assistant clerk, Neen Hemada, on running solo, flying the ship herself this evening and doing a fine job in, in doing so. We appreciate it and job well done. Thank you. And with that, first person signed up for public comment this evening is Jack Wigan.
Seems like I picked a nut off an interesting meeting.
You did, and your patience is virtue.
To make public comment, but for our area, it's really important. I live, my name is Jack Wigan. I live on 1050 Kenneth Drive. I've lived there over 50 years, and when we moved in, it was a very peaceful and tranquil area. About a month ago, I was told that there was a den of fox, on Edgewater, three houses. Edgewater passes through Kenneth. Three houses to the west, there was a den. A mother, a father, and four babies. We called the dog ward, dog warden and asked him what they could do to check it out. He said he'll check it out, but he was very reluctant because it's on private property. Shortly after that, we saw the fox in our backyard fenced in by, on the lake, private, sleeping under one of our bushes. Called the animal control again. This time, they came out to the property and said, oh, they're pretty hard to catch, but there's a group that we use called Cages by Jim that helped us get rid of aggressive coyote. My wife called four times. Another neighbor called three times, and still, we have not gotten any reply from this group. Several neighbors have also seen these fox in the area. A neighbor on Edgewater, almost next door to where these fox were living, was running with her dog from Summit to Kenneth. All of a sudden, the fox started chasing her. She never ran so fast in her life, she said. There happened to be a person in a car that started beeping the horn, and that's the only way she made it to the house. These fox have claimed our territory. We have called Kyle Baker, left a message. We talked to Maureen Bach about this and called the mayor's office twice. We still have no replies. Every day for the last week or so, apparently the babies are big enough to go out on their own, we have found parts of rabbits, squirrels, chipmunks, and birds in our yard. How would you like to clean up carcasses or parts of animals almost on a daily basis? These animals have taken over this territory. It is no longer peaceful and tranquil. I am asking City Hall or Council, someone, to help us take care of this nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any?
Yeah, I, I did not receive the call, but I will follow up with them after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, and hopefully whoever the contractual people are, they would be responsive, and we could look into that as well. Next person signed up to speak is Khalid Thomas. Oh, different last name. Maybe I'm just reading incorrectly. At any rate, that may be our last public comment. Mr. Wigan, thank you. Any updates or comments from my colleagues? Councilman Baker?
Yeah, I was on a family vacation when Foster pulled open, but I want to say that I went there on Father's Day with my kids, and it was delightful. So I'd like to thank the administration, Public Works, planning, everyone did a great job. job. Search for, people usually come up to you as a councilperson to complain about something when you're at a public event, and no one complained. Everyone said, this is amazing, and we love it. So thank you.
Yeah, I want to compliment that as well. I think it's amazing that it was done on time without missing a beat, in the summertime anyway, with the usage of the pool. I think we were, you know, back and forth more about the shortstop area of Fox Field a year ago than we had to be about this giant pool redevelopment, and that's, I think, a tribute to the process and to the contractors and to the administration as well. So thank you. Oh, and I should stop there. Anybody have anything else? Administration, any updates? Mayor, et cetera? Director Lanniger?
Good evening again. Just quickly, June 27th, we are having our next public meeting, it will be in open-house format regarding the lakefront waterfront, or it's redundant at this time of night, the waterfront access plan for Lakewood Park from 3:00 to 7:00 at Lakewood Park in the pavilion, or actually, it'll be in the women's pavilion, and we'll try to be out in the park as well. But if you can, please join us. Again, open-house format, 3:00 to 7:00, June 27th.
Thank you. I don't think there are any other updates, so I'll move to adjourn. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that motion passes. We are adjourned.